Stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Thursday morning, October seventeenth, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good. To Tom's left, Brandy Spangler, who'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning. Nico Hash, Egan Shea, Deputy County Attorneys. Gentlemen, good morning. And Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. Good morning, Mr. Baltz.
Good morning.
There are sign, there are agendas and a sign-in sheet at the front. Please sign in prior to leaving today so that we have a good record of who's attended our meeting. We will start with our consent action items, number two on the agenda. Mr. Baltz, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you just mentioned, this, the first item is Item 2A and its vendor claims report for the week ending October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff recommends approval of that item, and Marnie Bentley is with us as usual here today. The next item is Item 2B. That's public meeting minutes for October three, eight, and eight, two thousand and twenty-four. And staff recommends approval of that item as well. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? How about public comment on the consent action items? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none? Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent action items as presented by Roger Baltz.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent action items as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Number three on our agenda is Presentation of the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Good morning. You would introduce yourselves as you get to the microphone, and you have the floor. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Sturdle Simon, Emergency Manager, Lewis and Clark County.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kenny Gross and I'm Senior HR General Safety Officer with the county.
Great. Can you guys hear that? Sounds a little... Oh, the microphone's not on. Let's do that again. Just for the record, so we have it on the recording.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kenny Gross. I'm a Senior HR Generalist Safety Officer with the county.
And I'm Kyle Sturdle Simon. Oh, there we are. Emergency Manager for Lewis and Clark County.
Thank you. Yes, the green light must be on. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, we have just a single slide up. I was looking for the button for turning the projector on while I was over here.
Oh. That one.
So the big one in back of us is turned on.
Yeah, that's something Brandy can help us with, I believe.
Ah, oh, all right. So visible to you is a flyer about our great shakeout. Uh, so as many of you know, but some may not, Lewis and Clark County is susceptible to earthquakes. We lie along several faults that go basically from our southern border, follow along the lakes. We also have a few that are on the Great Divide area. And then quite a bit of seismic activity basically from south to north, the length of our county. Uh, most notably, we've had the nineteen thirty-five earthquakes. That was a series of earthquakes in the late fall. It happened in nineteen thirty-five and damaged a significant amount of infrastructure and homes. The estimates are that maybe up to sixty percent of the homes in the Helena Valley were damaged at the time. Of course, there were a lot fewer homes. Uh, there was a tent city erected due to instability of structures. Uh, there was, there was quite a bit of damage done. There were also two fatalities. So the reason we do this every year, uh, the Great Shakeout, is to remind people what to do immediately during an earthquake. And that is to drop, cover, and hold. Uh, the two fatalities in the nineteen thirty-five earthquakes were actually related to falling, falling debris. Debris falling off of the fronts or facades of buildings as people fled buildings. And so now the current thing is to make sure that you have cover, get under a sturdy desk, and then stay there until everything's kind of sorted itself out and stabilized. Okay. You want to talk about?
Yep. So today at ten seventeen, uh, each floor here at the City-County Building, we have, uh, lead, uh, employees who will be going around. They have a little script. And this is the script. It is, this is an earthquake drill right now. Drop, cover, and hold on. This is an earthquake drill. Drop, cover, and hold on. So we ask that if you're, um, still in your meeting, or if you're at your desk, we just ask that you participate in the, um, Great Shakeout today at ten seventeen.
Great. Uh, anything else? Couple of questions. So, um, after the quake happens, the simulated quake happens, is there any evacuation or anything like that? Or we're just simulating what to do during an earthquake at this point?
We are not evacuating the building today.
Okay, great. How about questions, Commissioners? We do this every year and same day, so today is ten seventeen, at ten seventeen. So it's this Thursday every, every year, whether that's the seventeenth or not. But anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it. How about public comment? Any public comment on the Great Shakeout? Any questions on the Great Shakeout? Commissioners, anything you want to add?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I might, I just, uh, this is kind of important to our family. My late father-in-law was in high school here at, at the thirty-five, uh, earthquake and wound up going to finishing high school in the, in the rail cars with his class. And, uh, so it was, uh, it was a big event that we always talked about. And then when I was quite young, where there was the Hebgin Lake earthquake, uh, that formed Quake Lake down, down by Yellowstone Park happened. And I slept completely through that one, but I guess I, you know, if you have a clear conscience, you sleep well.
There you go. There you go. Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the work on this, and, uh, I look forward to participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a bid opening for Augusta Gravel Supply. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hunthausen, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachrell, Assistant Director of Public Works. This morning, we have a bid opening for the Augusta Gravel Supply. Public Works is soliciting competitive bids from interested parties for the purchase of one and one-quarter inch minus top surfacing gravel. The successful bidder must have twelve thousand tons of material stocked piled by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five within a ten-mile radius of the intersection of Sun Canyon and Bar Creek Roads in Augusta. The material will be loaded and hauled by our county crews. This morning, we have two bids to open. This first bid that I will open is from CK May Excavating Incorporated of Belgrade, Montana. Hey, this bid appears to be complete. Bid security has been included. We have a base bid amount with a unit price of fifty dollars and fifty cents per ton for a total extended price of six hundred, six thousand dollars. Now, the second bid that I will open is from Valley Sand and Gravel of Helena, Montana. Hey, this bid appears to be fully complete. Bid security has been included. We have a base bid amount for the unit price of seven dollars and eighty cents per ton for a total extended bid amount of ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Staff would like to take these two bids under advisement and return in two weeks' time on October thirty-first for a recommendation for award.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Any questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right. And what we do is we open all of our bids in public, as we can see here, and then, uh, take a preliminary look and ask staff to take these bids under advisement, bring back a recommendation at a later date. So today, you're asking for October thirty-first to bring those back with a recommendation. Okay, Commissioners, we would need a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that, uh, we ask the staff to analyze these two bids, come back with a recommendation, uh, for, at our regular meeting on October thirty-first.
Second. Moved and seconded to ask staff to take the bids under advisement, bring back a recommendation on October thirty-first. Is there further discussion?
Uh, I was thinking about it. I missed the opportunity to second. I apologize.
No problem. It, it is a spooky date, so.
I was kind of thinking, does this involve witch hats? I, I'm not sure the Commission will work on it.
All right. Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dustbusters Enterprises, Inc. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Commission Chair, Commissioners. Uh, for the record, I'm Jess Whitford, uh, County Construction Project Coordinator. Just warning, we have the award for contract with, with, uh, Dustbusters Incorporated uh, for the Upper Sun Canyon Road application of magnesium chloride. Uh, two proposals were received from a limited solicitation. The contractors interested in applying magnesium chloride to the upper twenty-six-foot-wide, five-point-four-mile section of Sun Canyon Road. Uh, funding for this project is in the road infrastructure budget, and work will be completed by November fifteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. After review of both proposals, staff recommends awarding the contract to Dustbusters Enterprises Incorporated of Evanston, Wyoming, for the unit price of ninety-six cents per applied gallon for an estimated total quantity of forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four gallons for a total sum not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Unauthorized to Chair to sign all applicable contract documents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Please, Commissioner Payne.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Jesse, I've, I'm, I've never actually seen, um, uh, this process. Could you describe to me how they put the magnesium chloride onto all our county roads?
Certainly. That's a good question. Now, what we do ahead of time, I guess to back up, Sun Canyon Road, for those who aren't familiar, it's, uh, kind of the main corridor between Augusta and, uh, kind of the gateway to Bob Marshall Wilderness, Gibson Reservoir. Uh, anyway, what we do when we put this magnesium chloride down, we, we come in ahead of them probably a day ahead of time with, uh, our road grader, loosen up the top surface, and then with, uh, a chemical or distribution truck, it sprays the, the chemical down on the roadway to, at a metered application rate. So what we do in this case, we'd put it down in two applications to get good penetration in the gravel. So what that does for us, it, it serves two purposes. Uh, it's, it's, it's also a dust suppressant. It keeps the dust down. But also, it, uh, it helps hold the road surface of the fines, helps hold the gravel together, which in turn, as we know, uh, Sun Canyon is a busy road, a lot of rural traffic, high-speed traffic. It helps hold the, the road together, so it minimizes our, our road maintenance activities for the road crew. So in short, what we do, we loosen up the top surface, tops up, top couple inches, and then we apply it with a metered, meter distributor truck at the prescribed rate.
Thank you. That, yep, that makes sense to me.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Rolfe? Anything? Okay. Yeah, thanks for the explanation. Uh, it's, uh, amazing stuff. Um, just a little bit more about it. So, uh, it, I know it depends on Mother Nature and the amount of traffic, but it tends to last a while and kind of have a rejuvenating experience when we get a little moisture as well. Is that correct?
Yes, it does. It, uh, the moisture in there actually draws it further into the, into the gravel base. It's been our experience in the past up there with this, the gravel that we specify, or the gra, the bid that is opened. Uh, it's been a real good product for us up there in the past. We've experienced the once we put this gravel down and then apply it with this magnesium chloride, uh, it may be up to two years. We don't have to blade for maybe that period of time. So it's been a good product for us, and like I say, minimizes our efforts for the road maintenance activities.
Yeah. Very good return on investment typically.
Certainly it is.
Yes. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioners?
No.
How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right. Seeing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dustbusters Enterprises Incorporated as presented by Mr. Whitford.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you, Jess, for the excellent explanation as well.
As always, thanks for your cooperation. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant application to the Montana Department of Transportation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Hunthausen. Commissioner Rolfe, good morning. Commissioner Payne, good morning to you as well, madam. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Kevin Horn. Uh, spelling on that is first name Kevin, K.E.V.I.N. Last name is Horn, H.O.R.N.E. I'm the Operations Manager for Lewis and Clark County's Public Works Department. Would like to draw your attention, Commissioners, to number, item number six on today's agenda. It is entitled Grant Application to the Montana Department of Transportation. And as a side note, I am presenting this on behalf of Mr. Dan Carlin, who is out today. So he has done, if not majority of the work, all of the work on this grant application. Um, and I'm happy to, happy to present, present on his behalf, so. Over the past several months, Public Works has been working on a repair plan to resolve issues with approaches to the Craig Bridge in lovely Craig, Montana. Approximately every four years, bridge crews add asphalt or do concrete repairs to address persistent settlement. We engage TD&amp;H Engineering to design a repair plan that will permanently solve this settling issue. The estimated cost to implement the repair plan is one hundred, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty cents. We understand that the Montana Department of Transportation has approximately eight million dollars remaining in Senate Bill five thirty-six grant program for quick fix repairs. Recent conversations with Mako, who co-runs the program, have indicated that this, this project and its costs are within the guidelines for the grant program. This grant, if received, will provide one hundred percent of the funds necessary to complete the repairs for this project. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners authorize staff to submit the grant request to Montana Department of Transportation and authorize the Chair to sign the letter of request accompanying the application. And Mr. Chair, Commissioners, in your packet as well, there is a, a schedule of values of the bid items uh, that was prepared by T, TD&amp;H that shows all the work that needs to happen on this structure. And also, Mr. Chair, um, the letter to MDT, and, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to read that for the record. That is the one that we're asking for your signature.
You bet.
This is addressed to Mr. Chris Dorrington, the Director of Montana Transportation, in regards to Senate Bill five thirty-six Quick Fix Repairs Grant Application. Your Director, Dorrington, thank you for the opportunity to apply for Senate Bill five thirty-six Discretionary Funds. In September of two thousand and twenty-four, we completed the design of a bridge and backfill and end wall detail repairs for the Craig River Bridge. The estimated total project cost is one hundred, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty cents. The Craig River Bridge was installed in two thousand and six through the Montana Department of Transportation Off-System Bridge Program, and it provides primary access to an area serving numerous residents, businesses, recreational areas, and connects Interstate fifteen to the Frontage Road. The route serves nearly four hundred vehicles per day based on past traffic counts. The condition of the bridge itself is in good condition. The approach has suffered from chronic settlement issues because, because of an expansion joint detail that is no longer used by the Montana Department of Transportation. Bridge crews have conducted approach and road repairs approximately every four years as a result of the pedestrian sidewalks had to be replaced twice in the eighteen years the bridge has been in service. In essence, the approach pres, presents a persistent maintenance and safety issue, and a permanent solution is needed. We appreciate the department's consideration of our application and look forward to working together on this most important project. Sincerely, Annie Hunthausen, Chairman, Board of County Commissioners. And this letter will be attached to the grant application. And I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Appreciate it very much. You, uh, covered a lot there. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions, please?
Uh, if you might, can we talk, maybe in layman's terms, exactly what's happening and which end of the bridge and that sort of thing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Walt, that, that's a really good question. So, um, when you have the front of the bridge and you have the asphalt that connects to the bridge, that's where we're seeing the majority of the failure. The asphalt keeps settling, nothing on the structure itself. We actually put together, staff put together a plan about two years ago to do those repairs. Um, it's similar, a similar repair to what we did like on Wiley Drive or the Country Club Bridge, where we dig out the bridge ends, we put new material in, more of a lean concrete, so it's more durable, and repave it. And that was our original intent. Um, in the last six to eight months, we've seen a lot more settling than we would normally see, which triggered us to get some consulting engineers on board with us. We couldn't find where we were losing material. Um, once we pulled all the drawings, uh, the original drawings of the construction of the bridge that Morgan Aweswood did back in two thousand and six, um, it was a design that Montana Transportation used for a short amount of time. Um, it's got some SDI boarding that's attached to the front of the bridge abutments itself. Um, it also had an inadequate water stop where the connection of the concrete of the bridge connects to the asphalt. So all that water was filtrating in there, causing those settling issues. So, um, they, they have designed us a really good design to solve that problem for the long haul. Um, it's got some new concrete approach slabs that are notched. It's got a, a better water stop in it. Um, we think it's going to be the, the cure-all for going forward, so we don't have to keep doing those repairs.
Follow-up, if I might. Is this on both ends of the bridge?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Rolfe, yes, sir, that is correct.
All right. Thank you. Great question, Commissioner. Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. Anything else? All right. Let's move forward. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Anybody in the room been over the bridge and want to tell about story? No? Okay. Mr. Horn has.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I do have a tidbit for you on the Craig River Bridge. I don't know if everybody is aware. It is the second-longest bridge that crosses the Missouri River. Only, only second to the Port Benton Bridge that has been abandoned for quite some time. It's a pedestrian walking bridge now. So then their, the original bridge was, I don't even know when it was constructed, but quite a while ago. But it is, to my knowledge, is the second-longest crossing across the Missouri River. Four hundred and ninety feet long.
Well, stay there since we're doing some education. Uh, just the, uh, MDT's Off-System Bridge Program is a, is a great program, and it really helps. Like, this, this bridge that you just described and the length and all of that, for us to do that ourselves and pay for that ourselves as the local government would be almost impossible. And so, uh, in partnership with the state of Montana, they have this Off-System Bridge Program where they infuse money, sometimes federal money. Um, and we have an opportunity to, uh, replace a bridge like this, which happened back in two thousand and six. And happening now over Dalton, uh, at the Dalton Mountain Road, over the Blackfoot River in Lincoln. And we, we wouldn't be able to fund a four-point-five-million-dollar bridge ourselves, which is being, uh, installed now uh, through this Off-System Bridge Program. So maybe just to comment on that.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, one hundred percent without MDT's partnership on that, that, you know, the, the Dalton Mountain Bridge is exceeding four million dollars. I mean, we would never be able to. It, and it's probably maybe half the length of Craig River Bridge. It's a, it's a great program. My, my, my kudos go out to Dan Carlin for keeping up on all, all that stuff and working with MDT and following up on these grants. Um, this specific Senate Bill five thirty-six is, as you recall, Commissioners, paid for the other half of our head lane bridge under another category of that. So, um, along with a Montana Coal Endowment Program money, we just wouldn't be able to afford to get those kind of things done without our, without our federal partners, for sure, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Commissioners? All right. Again, how about public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the grant application to the Montana Department of Transportation, uh, as, as explained by Mr. Car.
Second.
Mr. Horn.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All right. We're on to the next item on the agenda, which is Task Order, Amendment Number Five to the Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Drenda Nieman. I'm the Health Officer, Department Director with Lewis and Clark Public Health. This morning, I have before you a grant task order, Amendment Number Five, from the Department of Public Health and Human Services to Lewis and Clark Public Health for Home Visiting Services. I promise I didn't do anything this morning. For over ten years now, we have offered two evidence-based home visiting programs to pregnant women and families with children up to five years old. Nurse Family Partnership, uh, serves women starting early in pregnancy through children, the child's second birthday. This program focuses on the health and safety of first-time mothers who face major barriers to accessing resources and supports needed to achieve the greatest health and wellness outcomes, like child health and development and increased economic self-sufficiency. We have one nurse with a caseload of nineteen in this program. Parents as Teachers is the second evidence-based home visiting program we offer. This model offers a wide array of services to families with children from prenatal through kindergarten and offers deep insights into early childhood development. Outcomes of this program include increased parent knowledge and early childhood development, improved positive parenting practices, increased child's, uh, school readiness and success, and much more. We have two home visitors dedicated to this program, and each carry a caseload of twelve families. The amendment before you extends the term of the grant through September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and adds an additional two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars for the fiscal year twenty-five operations. The grant includes a combination of both state and federal funds from the Health Service, Health Resource and Services Administration, or HERSA, and is included in our, uh, fiscal year twenty-five budget. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Good explanation. Um, so this is a program that we have been doing on, ongoing. This is an amendment to our task order that adds, um, length of time and an infusion, infusion of funds.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
For extension of the services.
Correct, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We've actually been providing evidence-based home visiting services for well over ten years in our community. And, um, the way the state is choosing to handle this particular task order is to amend it each year and provide us the additional funds for another year of service.
Right. Thank you. Just wanted to put that in simple terms for me.
One, just one question, if I might. Um, the, uh, um, end date on this is Sep, is the end of September roughly, uh, which doesn't really coincide with our fiscal year. But it's really going to be operated through the fiscal year that it'll, all of this appear in the fiscal year budget.
Yeah. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe, that is confusing. Um, this particular grant, uh, task order from the state is, is based on the federal fiscal year. So it, it rolls on a October one through September thirtieth fiscal year. But it does, we, we, when we build our budget, we do coincide with our county fiscal year. So we have to do that with multiple grants that come from both the federal government as well as the state government. We have to do some fancy budgeting that way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. Good question. Any other question? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion on this task order, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the grant task order twenty-five, twenty-five, five, four, one, one, seven, seven, oh, amendment number five to Lewis and Clark Public Health from Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as presented by Drenda Neiman.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the task order amendment number five as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? Thanks for the explanation. Appreciate it. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Anne McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you today is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. This is our final minimum allocation grant award, so happy to have this one come through today. This grant award is for eighty-five thousand dollars. It's for Trinity School District Number Four, which we more commonly might refer to as Canyon Creek School out there off Lincoln Road in the valley. And it's to install a new public water system and new wastewater system that goes along with the addition that that school um has recently completed. The county has committed sixty-two thousand dollars of our existing uh local fiscal recovery or direct allocation funds to this project, and then Trinity School itself is matching over twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's how we're meeting the one-to-one match on this DNRC minimum allocation award. Staff recommendations to approve.
Thank you very much. How about questions, commissioners? You may have just so please, go ahead. I'll I'll ask last. Go ahead.
Okay, um, Drenda, or, sorry, Anne. Um, this award's period of performance is through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Is there enough time to get this completed by that date, depending on the weather?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, yes, we have been in close contact with Trinity School, their engineers and the contractor that's been working on this. And so twenty twenty-five will be a year and two months from now, and they feel like between the spring and the summer, they'll be able to complete the work.
Uh, that's right. It's a year, two months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay. Um and I don't have an either. I was just gonna kind of mention the same thing that we have through that period of time to get it done. It looks like it it should be in this next construction season. They should be able to get everything handled.
Yes, Mr. Chair, they're actually going to be going out for bid for the construction piece of this, I think, this fall.
Okay, they might even get it done this fall. Good, or some of it this fall. Right, good. Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation as explained by Ms. McCauley.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion. I would just say, um, I think you explained it pretty well, but the uh minimum minimum allocation grants, that we had some money and the state had some money, and we typically matched that money. This was one of those for infrastructure specifically, and um this works well. I'm glad that we were able to help out Canyon Creek with some of our American Rescue Plan dollars that we had allocated in this direction. Please, Commissioner.
Um, just a comment. I was visiting with one of the residents out of Canyon Creek recently, and they were very concerned about because they have so many more students than their current design was initially intended for. They're very concerned about their current system failing this winter sometime. So um I think they've gotten things moved so that that they can actually accomplish what they need to set out. But this is a timely project, and it really needs to be taken care of. Um, so I'm glad to see this is moving along.
Hopefully, this is the last ball in the air that needed to be grabbed. I think we've done the other rites of way and those kinds of things. We're ready to go. So I hope it all gets uh it's done. Okay, or easements, I mean. Uh, anything else, Commissioner?
We just, uh, again, I think this follows the pattern that we tried to establish, but all this extra money that came from Washington, uh that we wanted to use for projects that were one-time in nature, rather than create long-term expenditure problems that we'd have to raise taxes for down the road. And this fits that fits that that mode, solves a problem that we uh might have might have otherwise had to go out and try to raise the money for. So uh appreciate your uh, Anne, I really appreciate your watching out for us on these things and getting it done right.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Without any further comment, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda on the agenda is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the State of Montana Board of Crime Control. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Coldrin. I'm a detective with the Sheriff's Office. Earlier this year, I came to you requesting permission to apply for and continue with the long history of the Sheriff's Office, applying for the Stop Violence Against Women Act grant through the Montana Board of Crime Control. With your permission, I completed the application process, and I was recently notified that the application scored ninety-two point seven percent, and we were awarded seventy-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for the VAWA grant to continue. That's a county match of twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four. This is one of our higher awards in recent years, um and that's based off of the needs for the county. And I'm here today to ask your permission to accept the award and to continue further this very important program for the community of Lewis and Clark County.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions, commissioners?
No.
Yeah, it's great. I'm glad that uh good score.
Yeah, thanks.
That's awesome. We take note. We know a grant writer among us unless.
Right. I had to have her help quite a bit, so I'm sharing something quite a bit, but it went well.
Just.
Yes.
Uh, a question. What did you do? I mean, or do we have more need of this this year? Is why? Why did you get such an extremely good score?
Yeah, I think it uh just based off the they they break it down by category. Um and I'm not exactly sure what their criteria is for scoring, but you know, the um with the population inevitably growing in our community, you know, our our numbers are going up um for these calls for service specifically. You know, some of the stats I have, we're in preliminary stat collection for two thousand twenty-four, obviously, because we're still finishing that year. But you know, the Sheriff's Office in two thousand twenty-three, um I have some numbers here. I think this is based off of why we got such a good score as well. Um, we responded to seven hundred and twenty-two domestic violence and family disturbances, one hundred and sixty-two regarding privacy violations, one hundred and thirty-seven of those were sexual assaults and sex crimes, one hundred and fifty were protection order violations, and seven were stalking cases. So the increase in calls for service, even from our patrol division, is increasingly going up, and and that's inherent with population growth and um crime fluctuations. So I'm thinking that that's probably why the the number went up, and I presented that well enough for them to understand that we um have a very big need for this position and to continue this education for all law enforcement. So.
Well, I'm, I am, I feel bad that this is necessary. Our society seems to be, well, because it's growing, it is changing. But I appreciate the fact that you're taking positive steps to it, address the issue. So thanks for your explanation.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the question, Commissioner. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Oh, please come on up and introduce yourself for the record, and you're part of the team. You could have come up with.
You may come with me, Matt. I'm Sherry Martin, the Senior Financial Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office. I just want to say to Anne, we couldn't do what we do with our grants without Anne's help. That is all I wanted to say.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Anne is superstar. We are so glad that we have. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none. Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the State of Montana Board of Crime Control as presented by uh Matt Coldrin.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion. Really appreciate the explanation. Like that, you know, kind of try to imagine people that are watching from home today and that don't know anything about what we're talking about and maybe weren't even here when you asked to apply for the grant. So just really appreciate the uh full explanation of how things work and what we're what we're uh getting with the money. So thank you. All right. Anything else, commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Transportation. Good morning, sir.
My name is Chris Weiss. I'm also our office coordinator with our program. That is the reason I'm here is to present the grant award. The state with the step program for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um this step program, we've been involved with for at least the past twenty years. Um it's very important for our office for traffic enforcement. As deputy, or excuse me, Detective Colton said, our calls for service are extremely going up because of the influx of people moving to our county. Um our patrol division is mainly dealing with calls for service that are being dispatched to, and we don't have the the manpower to conduct traffic enforcement. So this grant allows us to have strictly overtime shifts available for our deputies to seek out, deter DUIs, make arrests for DUIs, seatbelt enforcement, et cetera. Um like I said, we've been doing this for the past twenty years with the state, and it's a it's a pretty good uh grant for our county, our community and our citizens.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Commissioners, questions, comments? Please, Commissioner.
I'm not very good with acronyms. What the heck is this tip program?
Yes, ma'am. It's selective and traffic selective enforcement traffic program. Um they say they use the word selective because it's strictly for traffic enforcement. Uh we don't respond to any dispatch calls. We strictly seek and deter traffic violations per Montana Code annotated.
Thank you.
So just along those lines, uh typically, the way things are now, as we've been describing it, so busy that it's hard at times to really do much traffic.
Correct.
You're responding to all these calls, responding to accidents, maybe those kinds of things. So you just do pure uh traffic type of uh work out there. It's a little far and few few and far between. So these dollars allow us to have some shifts dedicated just to that.
Correct. Yep, that is correct.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Ralph, anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
Yes. How about public comment on this item? How about public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none? Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I'd move uh to approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Transportation as explained by Officer Weiss.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission but not on today's agenda. Is there any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any public comment? Hearing seeing none, we commissioners will stand adjourned. Thank you.